Kind of late, but I want to express my gratitude to town of Dover for allowing us to be here. This was a last minute effort to try to get this done and try to find a place. And I made a phone call to Mr. Ross Parks and he allowed us to view this venue for this. I extend my thanks to Stewart County Streaming for recording this event, sending me and everybody involved with your organization. I really appreciate all y'all coming out and doing this. I want to emphasize that this event was organized on short notice and I'm committed to keeping the residents of District Six and the county informed of what's happening. The purpose of gathering is to showcase the candidates found for District Six school board vacation. David Ross, Mike Keel, and Kyle Pasol. Although Kyle will be unable to attend at the prior events. Each candidate will be given the opportunity to deliver an opening statement and respond to a set of predetermined questions. Following this, we will open the floor to questions from the audience. I urge everyone to be courteous and respectful and hope this event provides valuable insights into the candidates' views and platforms. Thank you.
All right, a big thank you to Brad Jones who set this up. Seriously, I mean, I love that he went out of his way to do that. Let's give him a round of applause. Keep it everybody informed. I just want to say every candidate was asked to be here. Every candidate is given an opportunity to answer these questions. And we're going to try and get y'all out of here as quick as possible while still answering everybody's questions. That way in case any of y'all need to go to the Easter egg hunt, then we'll get you there. All right, we're going to go ahead and start with Mike Keel. Question number one.
Introductory.
Oh, introductory, I'm sorry.
All right, I'm Mike Keel. I'm a lifelong resident of Stewart County. I'm a father, a husband and a father. My daughter is 16. She's a student at Stewart County High School. I've also lately gained the title of Patty. I've got a grandson that will be entering kindergarten in the fall. So I'll have two students in the system next year. My education, as I said, I'm a lifelong resident. Graduated from Stewart County High School in 1985. I have a Bachelor of Science degree in engineering from the University of Tennessee at Knoxville. And I have a Master of Arts degree in theology and ministry from Welch College in Galveston, Tennessee. So that's just a little bit about me and I'm ready to take the questions.
All right.
You know, they do this.
All right.
I'm David Ross. I am a Stewart County native. Lived here on the line. I'm a school teacher. I am a public school teacher. And there are very few school boards in the state of Tennessee that have a teacher on the school board. Because teachers are not allowed to be on school boards in the districts or counties where they live. So therefore, it's a rare thing to have a school board, having a teacher on the school board. I'm a taxpayer. I'm a voter. I too graduated from Stewart County High School. Mine was 10 years prior to mine. I'm a 1975 graduate in Stewart County High School. My class and I, I was senior class president and we established the Kerry Joe Harper Salutatorian Scholarship with the family and have endowed that scholarship that has gone to the salutatorian of Stewart County High School for past 31 years. I'm very proud of that fact. On education, I have a Master of Science degree in English from Murray State University. Master of Arts degree in English, excuse me, Master of Arts degree in English from Murray State University. Master of Science degree in Journalism, Professional Writing from Murray State. Bachelor of Science degree in Radio Television Communications and English. And Master of Arts in Teaching from Austin Peay State University.
All right, are you ready for the questions?
Sure.
All right, we're going to go ahead and start with Mr. Mike over here. And we'll go ahead and run you through them. Then after you get done, we'll move over to you and then we'll open it up for other questions. So question one, why are you running for the Board of Education?
You know, a few years back Franklin Graham did this bus tour across the country during the 2016 presidential campaign. I got to go see him up in Nashville. And at that time, he was encouraging Christians to get out and vote. He also encouraged Christians to fill local government positions. And at that time, I took it to heart and decided that I wanted to be involved in my local government. I thought about what my qualifications were best suited for. And I decided the school board was probably where I could be most useful. My problem was at that time and since then, I've been represented by Kenny Collins and Boo Beecham. So I didn't feel like I could improve much on the representation that I had. And probably politically, it would have been a waste of time too. But that's what has prompted me to be, want to be on the school board, to serve the community in this way. And I had another part to this answer, but I'm going to say it because I think we've got something pertaining to that coming at the end. So I'll reserve that for later.
All right. Question number two, is there a particular issue that motivates you to serve on the Board of Education?
My motivation, my particular issue is our school system has problems. Every school system does. But overall, I think we've got an excellent school system. And my desire is to defend it against some of the radical ideologies that are sweeping this country. I don't believe that boys should use the girls' bathroom. I don't believe that boys should compete against girls in sports. I am against what has become categorized as woke agenda. I am anti-woke. And I want to add to the Christian influence on the school board. I know there's already Christians there and that's what I want to bring, is that influence.
Question number three, what do you see as the primary work of the Board of Education?
I think ultimately, it's about student achievement. We govern the school and introduce policies that improve student achievement through various means and metrics of measuring that. One way is appointing the director. That's a function of the school board. There's also approving curriculum and the budgetary, financial aspect of keeping the school system financially viable.
Question number four, how can a school board know if its goals are being accomplished and its policies are being implemented?
Yeah, so it comes from analyzing a lot of different data, I'd say. Test scores is one metric, but there's others, graduation rates, things like that. I think that pertain to the student achievement aspect. Of course, with budgets, you've got a number and you're either within it or not. That's simple. I thought of maybe a policy example might be if we implement a dress code policy, how could we tell if it's being implemented and enforced? Well, we should expect to see more code violations at the beginning of the term and gradually trending towards none at the end. So I think that's one way that we could measure if our goals are being met. And of course, communication with the director, it's going to be up to him to give us the data we need.
All right, that actually brings me into my next question. How can a Board of Education best communicate with the public?
You know, we have, we have a lot of means and methods of communication at our disposal. And already, there are open meetings. We've got the newspaper, the press. We've got, I think the most important thing there is that the member make himself available by phone, text, email, different ways to communicate with the public. And we've also got now streaming and Zoom meetings, things like this. Post pandemic, we've learned how to operate remotely. So everybody doesn't have to be gathered in the same location. And but we can bring everyone together digitally and virtually and communicate in that way.
All right, question number six, what do you see as the major issues facing your school district?
Obviously, one that is getting talked about quite a bit is the aging facilities, North Stewart. I think, I think in the next few years, as it comes to the end of its life service, building a new school and financing that is going to be, take up a lot of the school board's time. There's others. But that's the one that I'm kind of focused on right now.
How would you help bring more science and technology to our schools and promote STEM opportunities for children?
Well, I think a lot of that is accomplished through the grants that we receive and continue to monitor those available grants and different funding options. The school system recently received an innovative high school grant. That was $1.5 million to career and technical education. And as far as new technology, something else in post pandemic is that we now have one-to-one computer to student ratio. Before the pandemic, it was probably like one to five. But one-to-one student to device, I think we've actually even got more devices than students in the system, if truth be told. But we've got the technology. We've got the resources. Now the question is how to best use them. So I think going forward, it's not about bringing new technology. It's about using the technology that we have. We've got to find that right balance between digital learning and regular classroom instruction to avoid tech fatigue by both the students and the teachers.
Question number eight, what changes should be made on the state and local level regarding public education?
Definitely, my answer to the state level is we need to repeal the third grade retention. That's too heavy a burden to put on a third grade to either pass that test or be retained. Local level, various, various things, I guess. I would recommend, I'd like to see at the high school level anyway, an expanded curriculum where the students could have a more individualized course of instruction, more electives in their career path.
Question number nine, have you ever read the Tennessee Sunshine Law? Please summarize the law in terms of what it means to you.
I have read the Sunshine Law. And the occasion that I read it was when Mr. David Ross posted about it a couple of years ago. And I took the occasion to read it myself. He recommended that everybody read it and I did. To me, it just very simply, everything needs to be above board, open meetings. And I try to be careful about saying transparency. That's one of those words that can mean its opposite, mean something easily seen or something you can't see. But anyway, full transparency with meetings, no backroom negotiations.
All right, question number 10, what do you feel best qualifies you for the role of school board representative?
Yeah, so I think my education experience, work experience lends itself very well. As I said, I have degrees in engineering and my work experience has been in military construction projects at Fort Campbell and other bases across the country. Currently, I'm working for the Federal Aviation Administration for infrastructure and facilities upgrade projects. So the issue of facilities and upgrades and new construction and the cost of all that, my education experience plays right into that. Otherwise, you know, I think, I think God has gifted me with some abilities I can't take credit for. All I can do is offer to use my God-given abilities. I have, I'm a good team builder and consensus builder. That's part of being on the school board is you got to come to a resolution as a team and get everybody else involved. So I'm good at bringing people together. As an engineer, I'm a problem solver. That's what my training is. So I think between the two, education experience and the natural abilities God's given me, I think I'm very well suited for the position.
Okay, we're going to move on over to Mr. David Ross over here. Hello.
Hello.
Okay, so question one, why are you running for the Board of Education?
Children, all children, each and every one, children first, always. My constituent just came in. What school does he go to?
Dover Elementary.
Dover Elementary School. Children first. I want every child who comes to school in our District Six to feel welcome. That's the middle school. Let me pick out one student. Here's why I'm running. We failed this child. We as a community failed this child. And this is one test where you have to make 100%. Anything less than 100% is a failure. I failed. I'm not going to blame anyone other than myself. I failed that child. There are other children like that. And if you don't think that there are other children out there who need to be told that they're loved and that we want them to grow up and be what they want to be. A euphonium player, that's a low brass instrument. I play the trombone. I like to think that if I were a teacher at the middle school, I would have made a connection with Samuel. I like to think that, but I didn't know, wasn't that. So children need to be able to live their dreams. They need to know that we love them, every one of them. And if we don't do that, we fail the test. And that's one test. Doesn't show up on a rubric, which we'll talk about some more about the rubrics when we get to the state part. But that's the part. And I'm going to be sad for that for the rest of my life.
Maybe for question number two?
Yes.
All right, question number two, is there a particular issue that motivates you to serve on the Board of Education?
Children, children first, children always. I won't get their vote probably, and they don't pay many taxes. So I'm not beholden to anyone but non-voters, non-taxpayers. And I will stand up for every one of them, all the time.
Question number three, what do you see as the primary work of the Board of Education?
Board of Education actually has one important job, and that is to choose the director of schools. About 95% of what passes through school boards, it's passive though. It really is. There's not much that a school board can do. It's state regulated. It's federal regulated. You have pretty much, and it's there for a purpose. You have the school board. You do tweaks and touches and all of that. But for the most part, it's set. The school board can do a little bit about the budget. You talk about it. The big thing is the chain of command goes from the voters to the Board of Education and the Board of Education appoints the director of schools. And the director of schools is accountable to the school board. And then the director of schools, well, his getting paid biggest salary in the county, even more so than the mayor and the sheriff appointed position, will make all of the decisions under the guidance of, okay, the school board. And that's where you have the planning that goes through, but it's the director of schools. And that position is one that we've got to look at for our future because it's going to be very soon that we're going to be looking at a new director of schools. I have been told by the current director of schools that he doesn't plan to be there much longer. Of course, it's not his choice, it's the school board's choice. And we need to start looking now. One of the reasons why you do not have elected school board, school superintendents is supposedly so that you could have a search that goes out and can look at a lot of possible candidates. And that's what we need to do. We need to look far and wide and locally. And we don't need a handpicked successor to this position, which in the past it has been. Let's face it, it has been. There are some say that, you know, possibly being set there now. I have had several people contact me in the community saying they live here, they have an interest in being the next director of schools and they're qualified, very qualified. But they want to make sure it's an open process for that. So we have whoever she or he is. So we've got to pick the right person who has a vision, who can articulate on behalf of all of the children.
Okay, question number four, how can a school board know if its goals are being accomplished and its policies are being implemented?
If the children are succeeding and are happy and are able to live their dreams, and the public will let you know. That's how you know. And you listen to all of the public, not just some, not just the wealthy, not just the well-connected. You listen to the people, not just the people that have children. You listen to the people. The people will tell you. The people are the bosses, the people. The citizens are the ones who are the bosses and they deserve a say. And their bosses are the children. That's our primary concern. We've got to put them first.
All right, number five, how can a Board of Education best communicate with the public?
By having open meetings, all business is conducted in public. It would probably be good to have a communications director, a real one, not a political appointment. Usually positions like that are somebody's pal. You get somebody who can communicate. You've got, I give Mr. Pepper's a hard time, but the Stewart County standard does a good job most of the time. And he gets stoned when he isn't. He's open to public criticism too. But that's the way it's supposed to be in a free society. You've got social media. We did wind up having a good audience. We've got all of these devices now to be able to connect. But it's meetings like this, one-on-one, being able to talk to people, being able to communicate one-on-one is the main thing.
Okay, and number six, what do you see as the major issues facing your school district?
We do have infrastructure issues. We've got to start looking at building a school on the North Stewart side because there are so many people moving in now. We've got an antiquated structure. There's issues with it. It's got to have a immediate address to what's there, but there has to be a long-term vision. And it's not just on the north side. We've got to have a plan countywide. And it doesn't need to be just for the next five years. It needs to be for the next 25 years. And it needs to be revised and it needs to be looked at. And the public needs to be involved because the public is going to be the ones paying for it. And the county commission is going to be on the hook for this. And there don't need to be any surprises and there needs to be long-range planning on this. And there needs to be input from everybody who is a stakeholder. And the stakeholders, every taxpayer in this county, everyone. And of course, how do you do that? Well, you've got county commissioners who will be asked to fund these projects and come up with it via the taxpayer dollars. And I can tell you, Mike works hard, you all work hard, I work hard, we pay taxes. And right now, we are going to be burdened as taxpayers with lots of infrastructure. You can start talking about, well, we did this at Dover Elementary School. Built it in a spot where the state said, don't build it. We did it. Now we have to deal with it. We dug out a hole on the side where the high school is and built it in a place where it cost a billion and a half dollars even to get started. Okay, we're going to be working with that. There are issues there. There are issues that are, it's like the chillers that came out that the county commission had to address, you know. There's infrastructure problems that are immediate that need to be addressed, immediate. And then there's medium range and long range. So there's just so many.
Question number seven, how would you help bring more science and technology to our schools and promote STEM opportunities for children?
Now that doesn't Now, that is an excellent question. One of the ways of doing that is to get a real grant writer, and Mike said that a real grant writer, not a political appointment. You have to get someone who can actually, and the grants are there. And then you have the matches with the grant, you've got in-kind there that can match grants, big grants. A collaborate, we are in a wonderful situation in that we're right between two major universities, and they are major. Austin State University, Murray State University, there's collaboration with both of those. We have had Ford Campbell asking to collaborate with Stewart County on lots of different issues involving just what we're talking about. Tennessee Valley Authority has done the same thing, there are collaborative partners out there who are willing to work with us. And you talk about STEM and science, that's great, that's great for a lot of students, but that's not gonna hit for every one of the students. Reading and writing, and we need more trade classes. We need more trade, because that's where the jobs are. That's where the jobs are. And that's where the, I'm not downplaying STEM and math and science. But those are the buzzwords, and I can tell you, as a teacher, the students I speak with, a lot of them, most of them I talk with, have no interest in going to a four-year college. They're not going to, they wanna get out of high school, they want to go into the workforce. They may change their mind later, I did, I didn't go right into college, I stayed out and worked for a while, learned more working after high school than I did in any one year of college. So, that's, along with STEM and science, we, of course, we have to have that, and there are ways to do that, but I don't wanna overlook the trades, building trades, electricians, plumbers, but they need to be able to read, they need to be able to write, they need to be able to communicate, and I can tell you, as a teacher right now, a lot of students struggle with the basics.
Question number eight, what changes should be made on the state and local level regarding public education?
We don't have enough time. That's one of the reasons why you need a teacher on school board. You need to empower a teacher, stand up and tell the state, your evaluation system for teachers is flawed, it's bad, it's bad business, it doesn't work. It's punitive, it's subjective, it's mean, it's vindictive. Sometimes it works, most of the time, it doesn't. I'm gonna say that I would critique the evaluation system the state has for teachers, as I would give it at an F across the board, there's that. Uh, I'm gonna say this, I'm kind of changing my mind, I think the state is getting it right on charter schools. It hadn't been that long ago when I was a, in total opposition of charter schools. They're getting some of it right, with a little bit of help, they could get it right. Then, public schools can fight it if they want to, but charter schools are coming, the state wants it, we gotta be ready for it. If, right now, the Board of Education, the local Board of Education, will be overseeing any potential charter schools, but if public education decides that they're not going to work with the state on the charter schools, the state is gonna appoint a Board of Education for the charter schools, take it out of the hands of the locals. Now, charter schools, there's a place for them, I wouldn't have said that some time back. Virtual school option, we need to be able to pull the trigger on that yesterday. Too much emphasis on testing, Mike's exactly right about that. You take a snapshot on one day of what a teacher has taught, or what a student has learned, and that's not right. To put all of the emphasis on being able to pass one test, and it's not just the third grade retention, it's all of it. And it's not just the students, it's the teachers. That's all we do, we teach to the test, that's all I do. Teach to the test, don't teach reading, that's why we can't think, that's why we can't write, because it's all about teaching to the testing. You need somebody who'll tell the state that, and you can't tell me that I don't know it, 'cause I'm there every day, in and out, day in, day out. And if you think you know what schools are, you don't know what they are unless you're in there, in the classroom every day, day in, day out, year in, year out, month in. So, state, there's a lot. There is a lot that the state needs to be told about. And no county here is the same as one in East Tennessee or West Tennessee. And if you don't have somebody locally who knows what it is to be a teacher, then you're not going to fully communicate that to the state, or to the county commission. Now, the parents, you may kind of know what it's like going on in the classrooms, day in and day out, what's going on in the schools, but believe me, you really don't. It's a war zone right now, things have changed so much in the past three years.
Question number nine, have you ever read the Tennessee Sunshine Law? Please summarize this law in terms of what it means to you.
I have a copy of it right here. How many pages? Let me see how many words. In Tennessee, public business is discussed and conducted in public, period. Very few exceptions. I have a disagreement with the school board attorney, and I have a disagreement with the county attorney. Same disagreement over how the Sunshine Law should be interpreted. I'm a strict interpretist, I'm a conservative when it comes to the Sunshine Law. There are others who are somewhat liberal with it. All business, the public business is discussed and decided in public. When you go into one of these exceptions, very rare, it's impending and current litigation. When you go into an executive session, the moment you decide, okay, here's how we're gonna settle it, you come out of it. That's why you need two attorneys, that's why you need two attorneys, because attorneys are not gonna agree. Because they're gonna be, they're smart enough to be able to see it from different points of view, and then you put it out there, and then the public will decide. So, in all fairness to Mr. Parks, uh, he needs to choose one, he needs to choose one and give up the other, so that we can get another attorney looking at not just the Sunshine Law, but lots of issues. That goes back to the transparency, the public business, the communications, it hits all of it. This law hits everything that we're talking about, because this is what keeps the people who are in charge, the voters, informed, so they can make the decisions in order to vote, people then during an election, or if we get an unusual situation where you have an appointment, which is a totally separate thing from an election, because this one is an appointed position, it's appointed by the county commissioners. That's why you have to have strict interpretation of the Sunshine Law. The public business is discussed in public, conducted in public, period.
All right, and last one, question number ten, what do you feel best qualifies you for the role of a school board representative?
I stand up for the children, first and always. No exceptions, all of them. And if we don't feel that we have gotten every single child feeling loved, ready to succeed, then we have failed, and this is one of those tests where it's a hundred percent, or you start off.
Okay, and, uh, did you wanna open it up for questions now, or do you wanna go over some of the ones that have been sent in?
Um, we can, uh, go, if anybody's got a question out here first, and then I'll go into that.
Okay.
Um, I have one question. Um, getting a lot of texts and calls, and they're all got the same question of why now, why didn't I, they'll not run in the election, and you're doing this now. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, so that was part of my first answer on, on why I was running, but, um, in, at the time, in November, I did have an interest in running, and I heard that Marty Blaine was running. And I know Marty, and I felt like he would be a good asset to the school board, and that he and I would probably split votes, and so I backed off. It wasn't until it was too late to qualify, I found out he couldn't run because of the city judgeship, so I didn't get on the ballot, uh, in November. Because of that, the other part was, I just, I was transitioning into a new job, and I didn't know, uh, how that schedule was gonna work, there was some uncertainty there, so those two reasons, uh, kept me out of the race in November.
It's been a lifetime since the election. It's been a lifetime, it's been... Here's the reason why I'm running. We failed that child. However we did it, we missed something. This is different than the election, where you get out and you gift voters to vote for you. This is a special situation, it's an appointment, it's not the same thing, it's different. It's appointed by the county commission. I too had thought about running, I too had a different job, so I let myself go, okay, I'm not gonna do it, but I want to be able to serve every child, and we have failed that test.
Does anyone else out here have any questions that I could ask?
How can, uh, you help bully in the school?
How can you have it?
Well, I know we have it, what, what can you do about it, or is there any way you can? You know, I, I've looked at this, David, I one, one change that I would make, right now, it seems like the disciplinary policy is, is largely left up to the discretion of, of the principal or the vice principal. And I don't think you're going to see a real buy-in from the students until there is consistent enforcement of, of reasonable rules across the board, no matter whose child it is. I, I think a first offense, calling someone a name, teasing someone for an otherwise good student who hasn't been disruptive or causing problem, then the, the principal should have some leniency there to, to, uh, uh, offer some grace and, and, and maybe not administer a punishment. But a second offense, there should be an automatic disciplinary action that goes into effect, takes it out of the principal's hands. And that way, when they call the parent, I, one thing I like about the current policy, when, when someone's accused of bullying, they call the parents in. And they should, and thi- this is a problem for the school, it's a problem for the community, it's a problem for our society. And we need the parents and the community's help, but they call them in. Under my proposal, you have a, a one-time opportunity for some mercy, and then the principal can say, look, if they do it again, it's out of my hands, it goes to automatic punishment. And that's why I propose.
You have to make sure that you have the right administrators who will acknowledge that there's bullying, because there are double standards. I've seen it, I've watched, and I saw a student who was trying to take an ACT test. General school system. Bullying by three football players, and they were athletes, they were popular, till this child put her head down on the desk and sobbed, and there was water coming off the desk. I wasn't the teacher in charge of the test, I was one of the prosecutors, and I brought it to the attention of the principal of the school. And the principal said, well, that's just the way they are. That's just bullies, that's just, you know, it was football players. So there's a double standard. It has to be enforced consistently across the board, that's difficult, because it's not popular to do that. You have to have the administrators who will address the issue with everyone, and the students know it isn't. Excuse me, the students know that it's not addressed fairly. And when you say, oh, it is, or there's no bullying, and there's no double standard, everybody's treated the same, no, it's not. It's not, I've seen it. I brought it to the attention of administrators and had them look the other way.
Double standard for teachers also, some who make mistakes get punished, some do not.
I'm a little hard of hearing, say that one again, Miss Brenda.
I think you heard me, you just wanted to say.
I do that to students also, you make a good point, please. That goes back to the evaluation system. If you have an evaluation system, a principal can get a popular teacher and say, oh, you're a five, you're a five, then you get somebody that stands up to the bullies, and it's like, oh, you're, uh, you're malcontent, you know, you're loud-mouthed, you're stirring the pot. Gotta get rid of them, gotta make sure that they go somewhere else, make sure that they're not in the school system, to make sure that things happen consistently. Now, I get pretty emotional about that also on the bullying, because people will downplay it and say, well, they just gotta deal with it. Learn how to deal with it, it's like, really? You don't seem to have gotten used to dealing with it, because when people stand up and say, let's talk about it, it's like, we'll ignore it, we'll say it doesn't happen, uh, oh, they couldn't have done that, they're good kids, and it's like, you know, you gotta be in the, you gotta be in the hallway, you gotta be in the classroom, you gotta be in the bathroom, you gotta be around them to see what actually goes on, and I can tell you, parents don't know, teach, the director of schools doesn't know, the finance director doesn't know, the county commissioners don't know. With all due respect, Mike, engineers don't know, unless you're in the classrooms seeing what's going on, you don't really know how chronic and devastating these problems are for, for children and for teachers. The bullying is a bad problem. It makes students wanna go homeschool, and makes students wanna do things that we don't even wanna think about. So, how do you address it? The state, uh, doesn't give a lot of good guidance in that area. That would be, that was one of the criticisms that I had that I didn't get into. You wouldn't believe the training that we get as teachers on bullying. It's very small, very limited, you get a short amount of time, it's basically online things that you, okay, you're obligated to watch twenty-minute videos and do a certificate, and there it is, and, okay, we signed off on it, so it's not taken seriously. It's a major issue. And there's different, I've talked to some people recently about bullying, it's like, well, what matches the legal description of bullying? Well, okay, it doesn't quite meet that, well, that's good for a lawyer, it's not good for a seventh grader that wants to play the euphonium and be a veterinarian when he grows up. Or a football player who wants to play and gets into the locker room and gets harassed or worse and can't play football because his mother decides you can't be around that type of person anymore, and where does that come from? It's the modeling of behavior, it's what the, if the adults are doing it, the kids see it. It's the modeling of behavior. It's what the, if the adults are doing it, the kids see it, the kids know it. And we've gotta call it out. And you don't know it unless you've seen it first, unless you've been in the war zone, and it's a war zone. These children and these teachers, it's taking a toll on a lot of good teachers right now. It's taking a toll on the students right now. It's so serious. It's not a game. It's not a joke.
Anyone else?
I mean, I have to say, if there is bullying in school, he's in second grade, and he's, he's bullied himself, you know? And along with like the teacher's pay, uh, pay training and whatnot, we need more of that instead of going on. Because I, I've got a, a child that'll be two years old in July, and I don't even wanna send him to school just because there's only one pre-k teacher out there, and she's not even, right here, allowed to be left alone with the student because of open cases with DCS that she has. That scares me. He had an episode that happened with her. Like, why are we employing people like that? And letting them around our kid?
Is that a question?
Uh, no, not really a question. We'll stay with the topic.
Could I address that?
Yeah, how can this go on? You're an IMP student.
There was, I've had a lot of people contact me, like what you just said, saying that they're homeschooling their students. They're, they're homeschooling, and it's like, that's the option. Okay, I'm, and, and that's why I'm saying I'm coming around to the charter schools now, and the virtual schools. It's perhaps public schools isn't for everyone, you know, and those are the options. If we've got to realize that it's fair and, okay, just deal with it, well, this is one way of dealing with it then. Let's give other options, and they're there. Gotta start looking at them, and I'm so sorry that any students have gone through that.
Just say it's a little kid stuff, like you said, but I mean, later on, who do those kids grow up to be? The bully in high school and stuff. And I went to high school down here. They may call the parents. He's been bullied in school, and I don't get a phone call. He comes up to me and tries, and he tells me about it. They don't call the parents. They don't follow protocol.
Have you ever had somebody in charge say, well, that's not really that bad? Isn't that what they say?
Yes, it's, it's just little kids, so they're boys.
They don't take it, say, that's just boys, we boys, girls, we, I bet you, they're just a part of growing up.
Yeah. But who do those kids grow up to be?
Would you like to address it? He did, so I just wanted to give you the opportunity.
Yeah, I just stick with my, what I said earlier.
I mean, what about those kids that, sorry, that might grow up that feel bully, that might come to the school and shoot up our kids because they're so hurt? What about that? We need a lot of mental health things and stuff. We need a voice first, first.
It's a huge issue. It really is.
It really is.
Yeah, so education, training, all that is necessary. One of the things in the, in the handbook, at, at least from middle school, I know, said there's a, to be an incident log that's kept. And so, uh, one of the first things I'd like to do as a school board member is I'd like to look at the incident log. See if, i- if there's nothing reported on there, then I'm gonna say that something's being swept under the rug. That would be my first clue, is, uh, how much of it's actually being reported. I know some is, because I know parents have been called in. I, I think that's an important part too. But as I said, consistent disciplinary action. Uh, there's a difference in, in teasing and, and physical violence. Physical violence, there should be, uh, 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 zero tolerance. That's automatic, implements, uh, 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 discipline. But, um, I think it's something that, that needs to be addressed, and policy needs to be changed.
Anyone else? Questions? Okay, yeah.
Can you describe the war zone?
You brought up the shooters. I didn't. I've, I've said, well, let's see if it's brought up, and it's like, oh, it couldn't happen here, it couldn't, yes, it's already happened here.
I regret it. I would have graduated with that bullying.
It's already happened here, and there was much more to that than ever came out. And there's the transparency, and I know it, and I'm, and I, I know it because I spent time investigating it, 'cause that's what I was before. I was a teacher. I was an investigative reporter, and some people get mad because I keep saying that. But I'm pretty proud of that, the fact that I am, and was, and I can get information. I know how to get it. And I was able to find out, it's like, there was a teacher who basically told the student to deal with the situation, and that did become involved with the court system, and then kinda got swept under the rug. And that particular teacher, that coach, was able to continue in the school system and continue to do it, and it, it just repeated itself. And so it wasn't addressed. There's a lot of those kind of issues that haven't been addressed. They're out there right now, not being addressed, overlooked, double standards. Here's my sales pitch. I'm the one that'll ask the questions. I will. I will ask them, and I won't quit until I get the right answers. And the basic, the right answer is put it out for the public to hear. They'll let us know if it's the right answer. And from what I'm hearing, we're not passing this test either. We're gonna have some student decide, or person, somebody decide to do something more serious than injure themselves.
Would you like to address it?
No.
I've got one. Um, could either of you state if you have any possible conflicts of interest if you were to be appointed to the position?
Such as?
Anything that might cause anyone to question your decisions or behavior with the board? I know that's been a topic that...
I, I believe in the sunshine law that applies to my entire life. As a Christian, I believe that we're to live our lives above board and open to scrutiny. Uh, so I don't, I don't know, uh, any reason why, um, I couldn't perform the duties, and there's no conflict of interest at all.
Thank you for asking that question. I have no conflict of interest because I have no family members who are employed by the school system. So I'm not worried about a job or an evaluation for somebody, like a lot of people are, because that's how the director of schools gets so much power in this county, is by being able to give jobs to people, and you just look around and think about the people in important positions right now. When you have family members connected to the school system, if you don't think that that doesn't weigh in on how things are decided, then you're naive, because it does. I'm a teacher, but I don't work in this county. So I actually decided to leave the school system for the sole purposes, to run for school board. Now, it's taken me about nine years to get around to that, because I knew the old director of schools was going to support someone other than myself. And then I decided, oh, no, I'm not gonna do it. It just, you know, it's past time. And I regret it for as long as I'm a taxpayer and a citizen and a teacher.
All right, anyone else?
I've got a slight problem with you. You're bringing up my friend's little brother into your political agenda, trying to run for school board. And it really hurt me when you opened up by starting out by saying something about Samuel, 'cause he's a friend of mine.
And, and that is a great question. And it's a fair question, and if I hurt you, I apologize. But we've gotta talk about issues that involve students.
Yes, we do, but I haven't seen you around. I've never seen, you weren't at the funeral. You weren't at the meeting we had afterwards at our church to address bullying and how that teachers and other people in town can help. And the first thing you say is something about my friend.
And you're right about that, and I apologize for that.
Full disclosure, this is my daughter, Sarah. David talks about feeling guilt over Samuel's death. We do too. He's part of our youth group at church. So who failed him? We failed him too. But I don't, I don't put the blame squarely on, on just the school system here. I, I think it's, it's much broader than that. But we did. I'll tell you what we did. When we saw that sanctuary full of children consoling one another over the loss of their friend, we'd say, we gotta do something to help. I called my friend in Florida who's a grief counselor. He was retired army colonel from the chaplaincy. And I said, can you come up here and put on a conference and help educate us on how to prevent suicide among young people? On how to identify a problem, and how, uh, we, we can speak to these kids and, and, and teach them what really is the source of their value as a human being. And he did. And he said, I'll do it, no charge. He came up. We published it in the paper. We announced it every day in the schools, and we had one person show up that wasn't part of our church. So we can give platitudes, or we can take action. We tried to take action, and, and nobody came. It's all good.
Well, I would like to say, I apologize again, but I'll, I'll work in another county. And I don't get to spend as much time here as I would like to be able to. I've had some of my relatives who were young, like you, express disgrief and chock, and there's not enough that we can do. I can't apologize to you enough. I wish I could have done more. But it's not a political agenda. It's not. I would be more than happy to throw my support to Mike, Mr. Kyle, if we could... It's not about that. It's about doing what's right by these students. And, and acknowledging that there's a lot of emotions out there. There are a lot of emo, they're complicated. And it's no one person's fault, yet it's everyone's fault.
All right, anyone else? Yeah.
So, um, this is addressed to Mr. Keel. So you had a church function and helped all the kids in your church, 'cause Samuel went to your church?
We, we advertised for a conference for the community. We were hoping that there would be more outside involvement. We, we had, uh, had it set up in two sessions, one for youth, one for adults, so that the youth could speak openly what was really on their mind. And the adults went and had refreshments, and then we swapped places with them. And, uh, yeah, we put it on, we advertised for it, and there were about thirty people from our church were there, about half a dozen of our youth group, and one person that wasn't affiliated with our church. And that was, to her credit, the middle school vice principal, uh, Ms. Gercher. She, she took part, and it was good. It was good and informative, and, and, uh, I think it, it, it helped our youth group, it helped me. But we need more of that, and we need, we need turnout, and we need involvement from everybody else. Yeah.
Do you know Mr. Alex Berta is putting on a conference in May?
I heard that.
And, and that's, 'cause for some reason, I must have missed your announcement, because I don't know, I hadn't heard anything about it. And even though you put it up to the school, this is a big community, to be fair, you know? And every little bit counts from every single person, like you said, involvement from the whole community. So I applaud you for doing that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, did you have any more questions? All right, I'm gonna go ahead and, um, address a couple of questions that I was, uh, sent in. And then also, I wanted to just kinda scroll through the live feed real fast and see if there was any questions from there, 'cause I saw a couple come in. Uh, one of the things that I just wanted to, if y'all didn't know already, the commissioners, uh, they are in charge of voting for this position. That means not just District Six commissioners. That means District one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, all of them. So if you are in the county, you do have a say. You do have to call your commissioners over this position. And with that being said, I wanna go into this part. Uh, Melissa Fields of District Number Five, she was asked a question by a constituent, and so she go up, went ahead and sent it in to me, and I told her that I would go ahead and ask for her constituent. So, um, the question is directed at Mike, but I'm gonna go ahead and have both of you answer, just to be fair. And, uh, it says, do you have a personal friendship with the director of schools?
Absolutely. I've known Mike Craig since we were in preschool together. We grew up together, played ball together. I spent many evenings at his house, ate many meals at, at his table. We were like brothers. And because of that, I can tell him when he is wrong, and he will receive it. But sunshine law here, uh, uh, full disclosure, everything, I think Mike Craig has done an excellent job. I, I don't agree with every decision he's made, but I feel like he, uh, he came in right at the, the start of the pandemic and had to deal with all that, and I think he's got the, the, the education, the experience, and the disposition to, to handle those kind of situations. I won't always agree with him, but, uh, is he a friend of mine? Absolutely.
All right, David, did you wanna answer?
Mike and I have known each other for a long time. We're not as good a friends as Mike and Mike are. And I guess that's about all I can say about that.
Okay. And then, uh, that same person had sent in another question, uh, and both of y'all can answer. It was actually directed at David. Uh, what pushed you into wanting to run for the school board position?
I would wish that I could have been a teacher at the middle school. And since the questions and everything has kind of come along the way that they have, it's like... I applied for a position as a middle school teacher in Stewart County Middle School. And Donna Gillum wanted me to be a teacher there, and she said, come teach at Stewart County Middle School. Mike didn't want me. So that's one of the reasons why I wasn't there. And that is somewhat personal. And it goes back to when I was a teacher, and I stood up to the bullies then. Mike was the principal at the Stewart County High School, where the child was crying on her table and trying to take an ACT test. And I was trying to, you know, make that aware to the prin, my principal, and it was overlooked. I can give you a lot of other examples, and so, you know, I didn't really wanna come right out and say all of that, but things have kinda pushed it to that point, to where it's like, uh, the director of schools, please God. I didn't get the opportunity to be able to properly address the young lady's question. I would have loved to have been there this year. I like to think that I would have been a friend of that child. I think I would have. I've had students tell me, Mr. Ross, you came up and talked to me when I needed somebody, 'cause I recognized that. I'm not allowed to do that in my own county where I graduated from because of a personal falling out. Now, would I be able to work with Mike on the school board? Of course I would. But this director of schools position is so important. It could, it all goes to that. It just goes to that. And you've got to have somebody that's checked and balanced. And right now, you've got so many conflicts out there that it's just hard to do that. And so, yes, and I know a lot of people, I've got people in middle school watching my actions. So, yeah, I'd have to be above board and... So, you know, I'd have to be above board, but I want to ask the tough questions. I don't want to come out and have to say, okay, here is, you know, let's air all of the dirty laundry. But you know what? Sometimes you have to.
I'm glad you said that, because the question was aimed at me, but my personal relationship with Mike is if it would be a conflict of interest. And my good relationship with Mike will not be a problem. I think maybe a bad relationship with Mike might be more of a conflict of interest.
And it could be. That's why I think we need to start looking real closely at the next director of schools, because I don't think it will be Mike Craig, and I think that will be by his choice. But it's going to be by the school board's choice. Now, I don't have the same opinion of Mike Craig as the director of schools that you do, Mike. I think it's time for him to go live.
And same question to you. What pushed you into, go ahead and wanting to run?
Oh, yeah, well, that was one of the things we talked about early on. Franklin Graham's bus tour motivated me to want to serve local government. And I feel like I'm best suited for a position on the school board.
All right, and then another question from Ms. Pam Wetzel. She contacted me directly. She said she's very concerned about school safety and wants to know what can be done about easy access from the many outside glass doors at DES. We'll start with you, sorry.
You know, I don't have a ready answer for that. I do agree that we've got to provide a safe environment for our students if they're going to achieve like we want them to. They've got to feel secure. And to be honest, I have looked at the various safety equipment that's out there. I think, you know, there could be... I would advocate for some of these classroom devices that you can secure the doors at that point. I don't know how to keep them from coming right in, shooting like the shooter did a couple of weeks ago, shooting out the glass and coming in the front. Thankfully, we've got SROs. But it is something that we need to, just guys, look at and see what the best option is, keep our kids safe.
Well, at that school, somebody who's an expert needs to take a look at it. You need to bring in some experts from somewhere else, because we need some outside eyes looking at certain things. When we had, when I was at the high school here, and we would have, somebody would pull a fire alarm, and then they'd bring every student outside and put them on the bleachers. And it's like, okay, what if this was a setup, and there's a sniper up there in the woods, you know? And it's like, you got to be able to, it's like, if I can think it, somebody else can think it. And so, you need to have as many sets of eyes on things as you can and see how you're going to address the issue. On that particular one, on the doors and all that, I don't know. I would have to defer that to somebody who would be an expert in how to deal with those things. But that's the kind of thing that the director of schools should put on the top of the agenda. How would you, how would you react before something would happen to prevent it? And then after, you know, the board, it does happen, then how do you handle it as it's happening and afterwards? So, I don't know, but we can find out or try to.
Okay, and then if y'all are all done asking questions, okay, you've got one more.
Are either of you familiar with the term trauma-informed schools?
I'm not. I'm not either. Will you tell us what it is?
Well, just the talks of like the mental health resources that got brought up, bullying, things like that. It just, there's a lot to it. I'll have to pull up some paperwork and everything. But it is more designed to focus on students who have gone through a lot of trauma. I know you guys have brought up like the bullying and how sometimes it's coming from at home, those models, things like that. But training staff to be educated on what that looks like and how these students might have different needs. So, that does look at changing discipline policies as well too. So, for example, you've got a kid that's constantly in fights. Where's he getting it from? And your answer is to suspend him and put him back in that same environment he's learning it from and getting it from? So, just looking at different types of measures and things like that. It's employing social workers in all the schools or a social worker for the school district. I know we've recently done, but I know I've spoken to a couple of members of the Board of Education about their grants for that type of thing as well too. And I don't think they were explored or anything.
Well, see, that's part of the problem. What we're doing with this issue is they're saying there isn't a problem. And that's not a criticism of, okay, the personal thing with the director of schools. It's like, that's the way things are being operated right now. We're ignoring the problems. We are. We're ignoring the problems. We're not addressing head on. You've got to acknowledge that you have the, and the resources are there. I've been told by good sources that there have been some outside entities wanting to come in and mentor the students in the schools on the bullying issues that have been told by the director of schools, you can't come in. Now, where's the check and balance on that? It's one person's decision that that doesn't happen. That's why I'm saying we need someone that's going to be more than just a rubber stamp on what the director of schools has to say. And believe me, if I got on the school board, there's going to be enough people there that are going to say, well, you're being too, you're bullying the director of schools, so back off. And I would probably say, well, just deal with it. That's what you tell kids.
All right, everybody. Good. Okay, there was one question on here I specifically saw. Let me see if I can find it real fast. It's asking, how are they going to ensure policies are followed within the school system if you're a board member? I'll go ahead and start with you.
Yeah, well, and that does go back to the, the school board has got the one point of contact, the director. And so, the communication with him is vital. I think each school board member should have access to look at the the policies and how they're being enforced and gather data on that. But it's just a lot of data that's got to be taken in and analyzed to see if a particular policy is being effective. If incident rates go down or trending down, then, yeah, it's effective.
I'll address if it goes back to the director of schools and also the school board attorney.
All right, and if that's it, that's all I saw on the live feed. So, guys at home, if, I'm sorry if I didn't catch your question. It's not letting me scroll anymore. You are welcome to reach out, I'm sure, either candidate. Would you feel comfortable with that in the future? Okay, and we will have this available on our YouTube channel. Is, we all good? Okay. All right, thank you again to Brad Jones for helping us put all this together. We really, really appreciate it. It was very enlightening tonight, so. We hope that all of y'all have a safe night. Hopefully, if y'all are going Easter egg hunting, y'all can get over there in time.